All right. Here we go. In response to Governor Baker's declaration of a public health emergency and the related emergency executive order dated March 12, 2020, county situational public meetings shall meet remotely until further notice. This meeting will be recorded. It is also being streamed live on Facebook via the STTV page. The video will be posted following the meeting. Public comment will be available tonight via Zoom. Members may also email me keygates@sit.org with questions. With that being said, I'd like to call the August 24, 2020 Situette School Committee Meeting to order at 6:02 via roll call. Bramani?
Yes.
Dates, yes. Lynn Long?
Yes.
Long?
Yes.
All right. Thank you. Let's move into the agenda. There are no minutes to vote on tonight, so we will move right into our old business. Situette Safe and Strong reopening update. Superintendent Burkhead?
Thank you, Chairman Gates. I want to start off by just reminding everybody that our first day of school still remains September 16, 2020. We should be getting out details to families on what those first three days look like. If you look at our current hybrid model, that first day is Wednesday, a remote day, but we're looking to work in an orientation day and have an option to possibly come into the building and have an orientation. We think that's important, but there'll also be a remote capabilities as well. So we'll still work on that. We'll get that out soon to folks. Also want to point out that last week, our families completed a survey. I want to thank those families that were able to finish that. The question we asked, one of the four questions I believe we asked was based on the plan approved by the school committee, which learning option would your student be enrolling in for the 2021 school year? And that's to give us some numbers so we can begin our scheduling and our cohort work. And we had a close to a 72% response rate. The responses included 91.8% chose hybrid, which is over 7% increase from our last original survey. 6.6% chose fully remote and 1.6% chose other, which may include homeschool or attending private schools. This week, our leadership team met with, so our central office team, our principals, other leadership roles, coordinators, department chairs, all met for our retreat and, excuse me, last week. And we did a lot of work on our three plans, adding a lot of detail. You know, I'm very happy to report that the document we're coming up with is impressive. We have our final day tomorrow to put some finishing touches on that and look to share those updated detailed plans to the framework with our school committee and with our families very soon, so you can become prepared and comfortable with those plans. I know that was a question for everybody and it's important to everyone. So just know the work has continued and we want to make sure that documents are quality and that they're detailed for everybody. So we have been working on those. Those should be out very soon. So tonight, we've also, you know, safety comes up, as it should, at the forefront of all of our conversations. And we have been doing some talk about the metric that the governor and Department of Education issued. And we've been working closely throughout this process with our Board of Health. And I've invited Dr., I mean, excuse me, I've invited Board of Health Director Drew Shealy tonight just to join us to say a few words about the metric and about our work together. I know we have another meeting this Wednesday to look at the metric. We have our school nurses joining us to look at that plan and then the options we have for opening and closing schools and those important conversations. So along with also in conjunction and support with our school physician, Dr. Lane. So just wanted to introduce Drew Shealy. Drew, you there to say a few words?
I am here, Bill. So thank you so much for inviting me here. This is not something I ever thought I'd be planning or being a part of. So it is challenging times. We have worked very closely with Bill since he came on in his team. I am a big believer in following state guidelines and being consistent with those. I did notice when I looked at all of the surrounding towns that Situette abuts and fairly close, everyone's doing the hybrid model. So, I mean, there's something for consistency right there. These are living documents that we are creating. And as we learn more and more about this virus, you know, things could change. But as of right now, with all of the measures that are being put in place, following the state guidelines, following the DESI guidelines, I think we're in really good shape. You know, they do have the rapid response team that is going to be able to come out and do testing. A lot of it is, you know, dependent upon where we find cases. Obviously, if we find, you know, numerous cases in a household that doesn't have any school-aged children and it raises our level up from a white to a yellow or a green, I don't really believe that that necessarily would impact the schools where there's actually no one there. But if we do have an instance where we have, you know, three or four kids in a particular cohort or a teacher and two kids in a cohort or something like that, it's great that we have the ability to call the state and get that rapid testing here right away. So I really think that's one of the keys, is to be able to detect quarantine and isolate any cases that we have in going forward. That should be our goal in the safety of, you know, all of our students. And one other thing is, you know, we're all taking a slight risk when we go back to school under these conditions. And one of the things that we definitely know is that the virus loves elderly people, especially if they're over 80, underlying health conditions. So going forward, just with all of the young kids and with their grandparents, you really want to make sure you stress that, you know, if you are going to school, you want to be careful when you go see your grandparents or elderly relatives or elderly neighbors. You just want to make sure that you're doing everything that you can be to be protecting them. And the number one thing that we can always be doing is wearing a mask when we're out and social distancing. So those are the two big takeaways that I have so far. If anybody has any questions or comments or anything, I'm here right now. I know we have a meeting with Bill on Wednesday with his staff and Kelly, the nurse who oversees all of the nurses in the school system. And as I said earlier, it's a living document that we're working with and we're going to be continually willing to tweak it until we can get it the best that it can be for the time.
Drew, do you happen to have your video on?
No, I don't know how to do it. I'm not that...
Okay.
I'm lucky I got on.
All right. No, we just see a black screen. Just want to make sure. That's okay. Any comments or questions by the school committee? Ms. Brandalini?
Just, I guess my questions are about the rapid testing stuff. So how do they sort of set that up? It's just a phone call thing, like how it's all documented and the vehicle just comes down? Can you give us any more details on what that looks like?
All I can tell you is that it's a living document and the way that they describe it in the guidance is that, and it's kind of goofy the way they put Board of Health to be a contact, but it's basically going to be between the Board of Health and the administration as far as, you know, the superintendent as to when the rapid testing comes. They've, the DPH wants at least to have a little consultation with them at the local level, just so that we're all on the same page. And if Bill comes to me and says, Drew, I want to have rapid testing, I'm not fighting him. Fighting for him. Want rapid testing? Let's get it down here. How do we do it? This is what we have to do. These are the steps that we have to take. It's still very much a plan in process. Part of the reason I say that is, you know, it's 351 school districts and everybody reacts differently to one or two cases being positive, three or four cases being positive. And I worry that they feel that they may be overburdened at some point, especially, you know, four or five weeks into the system. And that's why, you know, I say it's a living document. It's something that is going to be tweaked as we go forward. And it may be something that more resources are needed as we go forward and the governor may come through with that if we see that type of need.
Yeah, that was kind of where I was getting at, was that it's going to be cold and flu season and people have allergies and everyone's going to instantly call for the truck to come down and do the rapid testing and who's going to get, where's it actually going to go and how many are there? And I'm like, I think we're all wondering what the protocol looks like through the nurse, kind of like tracking, like take us through a, I guess this is more of a school-based question, but it's like, I'd like to know, say a student comes in and they're coughing and sneezing, take us through, you know? Then what? Is it the isolation room?
If you come in coughing and sneezing, I would imagine that, you know, hopefully we'd have a conversation with their parent because that's the number one violation right there, is sending the kid to school sick. They're not supposed to be doing that. So, one. So let's say that he shows up and halfway through the day, he starts coughing and sneezing. It will be, you know, I would imagine it would probably fall on a teacher or the student himself to say, I'm not feeling well. And that would automatically step up the process where we have a quarantine room where no one else would go, where this person would go, get picked up from school immediately. We would recommend that they get tested immediately. And there's all kinds of test sites that are around the Commonwealth. We have, you know, we've won a couple in Norwell, they're in Weymouth. So we would recommend that they get tested. And then, you know, it depends upon what happens with the test. If the test comes back positive, then, you know, hopefully we'd get that within 24 hours. We would go to the cohort that individual student was. We're all having assigned seats, so we're in the same seats every time. We're all on the same seat on the bus, so we know that. We know that the bus gets filled from the back to the rear, so students aren't walking by each other and it gets emptied front to back, so that, again, we don't have that cross. And we would look at the close contacts of that individual. If it's a small room, you know, and there's 10 or 12 kids in there and the teacher noticed that some kids had their masks down a little bit, or maybe we test that whole cohort. But those are the questions that would be answered going forward as we went.
Okay. So maybe if we were testing a whole cohort, that might be a reaction to send the testing vehicles to school or something.
Yep, exactly.
Because I was thinking, like, mostly you, parents would probably and caregivers would just go to their pediatrician, like you would center to an urgent care and get a test and that's probably the quickest route.
I agree.
Thank you.
Just to follow up on that, Ms. Brandalini, we spoke about this at our leadership meeting today. There's new guidance came out last week in the Department of Education that was a little bit revised on the medical handling of possible cases in the school and district. And so we'll be sharing that with you soon. So it has been revised. You know, a nurse leadership that with us today. So that's forthcoming. But we do have, in our plan, we have the current, how we proceed with a possible case and then we'll be revising that with the newer information that seems to be fluid.
Okay. I guess we're just curious too about our metrics. Are we, we talked a little bit about tightening. Are we going to follow specifically state guidelines? Are we going to tighten our, you know, how many cases or any cases trigger what reaction from our district in terms of?
I would go right by the state guidelines as far as number of case, what the amount of cases would be to trigger the van to come down and do the testing.
Okay.
I also think in our, part of our work Wednesday, we'll be looking at that, so we can have something to present to the school committee for your purview on what triggers us, you know, closing schools, reopening, those type of things. So I think that would be helpful once we meet to come up with a document for you to look over and decide what you want to do with. How's that sound?
That's great.
The other thing I'd just like to say too about the virus is that the main mode of transmission is airborne. It's not coming off of high-contact surfaces. We stress cleaning high-contact surfaces on a daily basis because we're always touching our face and our eyes and our nose and our mouth. But the main mode of transmission is, you know, close contact, coughing, sneezing, just sustain, talking to someone within six feet without a mask on for, you know, 10 or 15 minutes. It's that type of transmission that we're really worried about. It's not so much coming in and touching the doorknob or a desk. It's really the airborne particles that we have a main mode.
Anything else, Ms. Brandalini?
No. I'm good. Thank you.
All right. Ms. Lindblom?
Thanks. Hi, Drew. I was wondering if there, if you have heard of or if you've already talked to companies, like Paul had said, companies that would come to the schools or the town to do testing, like a mobile testing, or is that even starting?
Outside of the state doing it, the state rapid response team?
Yeah. Would that be like the, you know, I know in the beginning of all this, there was the National Guard that was going out to facilities.
Going out to the nursing homes.
Yeah. That like, so if you had a situation where we needed to have a lot of people tested, would you send them all to like a Care 1 in Norwell or their doctor's office?
If it's a school cohort that we are looking at, it would automatically be the rapid testing.
At the Care 1, for example?
Say that again?
At like the Care 1 in Norwell, for example?
Would I send people there?
Yes. That, yeah.
If I, if we couldn't get the van, but if we're getting, if we're going to be able to get the rapid testing team down here, response team down here, that's basically what the governor has created for the schools, the same way that he used the National Guard. So if there's any type of, you know, testing that's going to be done at the school level, it's going to be by the rapid response team. I can't see sending 30 students down to a facility to be tested. That's just crazy. It's not going to happen.
So who makes up that rapid response team?
I couldn't tell you. I imagine it's people from the state. The state DPH.
Okay. I wasn't sure if it was still like the National Guard or if they've set up a team of people.
I don't believe they've actually set the teams up yet because schools haven't started in the state. But I imagine, you know, I know they are setting them up. We're on conference calls twice a week with DPH and we do talk about this. So they are being set up. I'm not sure if they're finished yet, but I do know that when they are, all the superintendents will get that information.
Okay. I just would like to know who, what, who is on that team and, you know, what the, what that staffing looks like, you know? Is it nurses, doctors?
I would imagine, I wouldn't be surprised if it is National Guard in some way.
Yeah. All right. Thank you.
Ms. Lindblom, we did just lose Chairman Gates, so if you could take over, that'd be great.
That would go to Mike Long as the vice chair.
Apologies, apologies, Mr. Long.
No, that's fine. Thanks, Seth. Hi, Drew. Thanks for coming into tonight's meeting. I just had one question for you. So have we had any conversations with those local Tier 1 test areas just to see if we can get kids or staff in there quickly, just because of the amount of people that could be in a school, just to make sure that, you know, if we can get a test done, you know, within a day, so that we're not having a problem, you know, waiting for a result?
I would say that the state would not want school districts sending large numbers of kids to private testing sites to be tested. If that, if it comes to that...
Yep. I'm sorry. I'm talking about a one-off, so if it's one or two kids or one or two staff members, not a large cohort.
If it's one or two kids, then they could just go right up to Norwell. Have we had any conversations with those facilities? No. They are open, you know, seven days a week. It's something that would have to be called. If it's one or two kids within a district or however it is, they may end up going to their private pediatrician to be tested.
Okay. Has there been any talk at the state level on, you know, what a small group of kids or staff should do, or is it just go to your college Tier 1 test area first and if not go to your pediatrician?
It's my understanding, if there's more than two individuals, two or more individuals that tested positive, they will send the rapid testing, the rapid test, the rapid response team down to two or more. That is what we have in the guidelines right now that they have set. That could change again, but that's what there is now.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Sorry, I keep getting kicked off. I'm back now, though. Are you all set, Mike?
Yep, I'm good.
Okay. I have a couple of questions. We mentioned a couple of times about the nature of the positive cases, meaning if there was, I don't know, a couple that didn't have any school-aged children or no affiliation with the schools, that that might limit our need to move from white to green to red or whatnot. Who determines the classifications of those cases? Is that just provided from the state?
Yes.
Okay. And do you know how accurate that has been? Like, who, so do we just, is that information just provided to the town?
It's on the state webpage, Reopening Masks. Every Wednesday, they give an update of every single town in the state and they classify it that way there. If it's more than, if less than five cases per 50,000 people, they don't show it on the town because they want to protect people's identity, especially if it's a small town and word gets out for HIPAA requirements. But, um, I forgot where I was going. The, um, now I'm lost.
I just wanted to make sure that that data was being reported so that if that were the case, that we would, it would be identified that...
We would be able to identify it when we get the case originally through Maven. We would be able to identify whether or not they have school-aged children.
Okay. I'm not sure if you know the answer to this or not, but if we do need to call in this, I don't know, we call it the van. Is there an expense to the student to participate in that test or how, do you know how that will work?
I believe it's free at this point. I don't believe it may cost. If the rapid response team comes down here, I don't think the city, the town incurs any expenses.
Okay. Just a general question, Drew. And so I don't want to put you on the spot here, but this is my fourth year on the school committee and we've never had the privilege of working with the Board of Health. So I'm just curious, in your tenure or just in general, how has the Board of Health worked with the school district in the past that maybe we just weren't aware of?
Um, I have not had a lot of dealings with the school districts in my tenure as, you know, director here in Situette. I was in Quincy for 20 years and I probably only had maybe a half a dozen interactions with the school committee. Mainly, they run their own organization and, you know, they have their own medical people listed, nursing and staffs and all that. I will say that we did have some, we did a lot with the Quincy Public Schools when we were doing lead testing in the drinking fountains of all the schools. So we came up with guidance for what they should be doing under those conditions. You know, for the most part, we just work hand in hand. We try to do the best we can under the conditions that we're given. And, you know, I listen to what you say and hopefully you'll listen to what I say and we come up with a solution that's going to be the best solution for the time.
Right. No, I think that's what I wanted to hear. I wanted to gain the confidence that we have the support of the Board of Health to, you know, obviously we have our medical experts on the school side, but obviously the more, you know, the more information and the more help we have, the better prepared we'll be to move forward.
I agree.
Okay, great. That's all that I had. Any other questions by the school committee members? All right. Seeing none. Drew, I appreciate your time. I'm not sure this is the last time we'll have you on, but...
Sure it won't be.
We'll try to assist on helping you get set up for video if we do have you on next time.
So I don't know if anybody knows my phone number. I'll give you my cell phone number.
Yeah. If you were willing to provide your cell phone and/or your email, I think that would be fantastic.
This is my cell phone number. I live right here in town. Do not hesitate to call me with any question at all. Do not hesitate to give my number to any friend or family member that has a question. You guys pay my salary.
Great. I think that that's very much appreciated. It'll go a long way. Do you have an email address too, or do you prefer the cell phone?
It's just, I prefer the cell phone and I do text too. And I'll pick up the phone on Saturday, Sunday, late at night, doesn't matter. I live right here in town.
Great. Very much appreciated.
Thank you for having me today.
Thank you. All right. Mr. Burkhead, back to you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Shealy, very much. And, you know, I hope it shows through that, you know, every time I call Drew, he gets right back to me, texts me, calls me. So I think it's hugely important to me as a superintendent to have that access to our Board of Health Director and we've got an excellent relationship going here. And, you know, you heard tonight that he's very accessible, so he's coming into the school tomorrow. So just wanted to, you know, welcome him to the meeting and thank him for all his work he's done and to let the committee and the community out there know that we've got a lot of this work, you know? It's important to have that Board of Health and school connection. So I think, you know, we have that very strong here and that's going to be important in the days to come. Next, what I'd like to pivot to is a short video on back to school. I want to thank Mr. Pfeiffer for his videography in this and putting this piece of work together. It's very, in my opinion, it's excellent, it's excellent work. But I also want to thank our principals for taking the time to complete this video. We had talked before about, you know, what does an actual classroom look like and hearing from our principals on, you know, the classroom setup and just giving it a nice view for everybody out there, our families and students and staff, what a class might look like when they come back. So we've got that short video to play and then I'll wrap it up there. And we're also looking to do something similar, possibly for the first day of orientation for our students and families on a day in the life of the student entering the school and where they line up, where they get on the bus and all that kind of stuff. So that's coming too. But here's our first video to kind of give you some insight into what school will look like in a couple of weeks.
I think when you share it, there might be an option to allow audio, I think.
Seth, any direction on that? I'm not sure. I didn't see that, but I can try. So you weren't hearing anything at all, Peter?
I'm not. Mike, Nicole, you hearing anything?
No. Nope.
Mr. Burkhead, this is Greg Lassard, one of your teachers. If you look on the upper right when you're sharing on the screen, there's an option when you've already selected the video. On the far right, if you click on that far right option in the taskbar at the top, you can then look down and it'll offer you the option to share sound.
Oh, I see, yep. Thank you, Mr. Lassard, very much.
You're welcome.
Let's try this.
For our students and staff, I'd like to share with you a sample of what our six-foot learning areas look like in our elementary schools, Wampatuck, Cushing, Jakins, and Hathley. In our middle school, Gates, and Situate High School.
Hi, my name's Donna Moffett. I am the principal of Cushing School, and I want to take an opportunity to show you a couple of the classrooms that we have set up just so you have an overview of what it looks like. This is a typical first grade classroom setup here at Cushing School. As you notice, they, all the desks are six feet apart. This is, would be our instructional area where the teacher has their desk here, but they also have this whole space that they will be able to instruct our students. So the desk setup is six feet apart so that the children will be able to come in, they'll have their own assigned seats. We are working on directionality, and I think the teachers will be working very closely with their students as to how you enter the classroom and put your things down and have a seat so that we're not having a gang of first graders all coming in at one time. So those are some of the things that we are going to be practicing. So this is a sample of what our outdoor classroom setup would look like. Right now, we have 12 desks that are out here. There will be a tent that will be over this space as well. And this is a space that students can use with teachers for more instruction. They can also use it if they are coming out to have their mask breaks, or perhaps they'd like to have lunch outside for those students who may be with us for full days. This is an example of our fifth grade classroom. As you'll notice, it's very similar to the first grade setup. We really are working very hard to make sure the desks stay far apart because with the movement of the fifth grader, their bodies are larger. So we want to make sure we continue to practice social distancing. And as you'll notice, every classroom has a sink. So we keep the path clear so that children can come and use the sink as necessary and at certain times during the day.
Hi, I'm Julie McKillop. I'm the principal of the Hathley School. All summer, we've been working to make sure that our spaces at the Hathley School are ready for students. Today, I'm going to show you one of our first grade classrooms, Mrs. Henry's classroom, just to show how we've begun to make sure that we are socially distancing students and we are preparing for their return. So as I said, this is Mrs. Henry's first grade classroom. I'm sure the first thing you're going to notice is that we have two desks that are placed together. The reason for that is we've decided kids in first grade need their stuff. So what will happen is in the morning, our friends that sit at the red desk will have a nice big label on here identifying this desk as theirs. Only the reds desks will be occupied in the morning. In the afternoon, when our afternoon students arrive, they will sit at the blue desk. Both will be cleaned in the middle of the day because we also know that first graders could very well lean on this desk. So both will be cleaned before the second cohort arrives. But this just makes it so now our afternoon friends also get to have their own material. The desk that you probably noticed isn't here is a teacher desk. So right now, in this particular space, the decision's been made that the desk doesn't fit in well. So we're working to have a small table for Mrs. Henry to work at. Each room at the Hathley School has a little bit of a unique configuration. So we're really having to go room by room, first putting the desks in at six feet apart, and then deciding what other pieces are important and need to fit in. So each room will be a little different in that way. The other piece that you'll notice in this first grade classroom is just a little bit of a help for students to understand how to move around the room. We've put a one-way barrier with tape around the classroom so that when students are traveling, they are able to move around. They will always have masks on in this room, so it is okay if a student were to be a little bit out of this line. But we want first graders to be comfortable and to feel like they know what's expected because I really believe that kids will be much more comfortable at school if they have an understanding of how the new school's going to work.
Hi, this is Principal Long at the Jenkins Elementary School. Welcome. I am here to show you a layout of a classroom that's six feet apart. So join me in looking at room 104. So this we see here is the stage area, as I call it, for teachers. This is their space, six feet from here till the first desk at least. This would be a teacher's desk or workstation area. And then, as you can see in the classroom, we have the desks six feet apart for students. And teachers will work to have a flow of traffic within their classrooms so students can safely enter and exit the classroom as they would need to. There may be certain areas in a classroom that students were used to having access to that may now be off limits to students just to keep them within their own space and safely social distancing. For example, cubby space may now be used for teachers to store their materials as we have taken other pieces of furniture out of the classroom that they can no longer use to have storage.
Hi, this is Tracy Reardon. I'm the new principal at Wampatuck Elementary, and I'm standing outside of a second grade classroom here at Wampatuck. Okay, so we're in a second grade classroom here at Wampatuck. And the first thing you'll notice are the desks are spread apart, and these desks are set up at three feet apart. But because we're running an AM PM cohort, only half of the students will be in here at a time. So this classroom has 20 desks in it. There'll be 10 students in here in the AM and 10 in the PM. So they'll sit at every other desk, which will allow for the six-foot social distancing that we are following. So every classroom has a teacher desk and teacher workspace. Some classrooms have two teacher workspaces if it is a co-teaching classroom. And some classrooms, if they're big enough square footage-wise, they have a table for some small group instruction. Typically, all our classrooms would have a table like this, a round table or a horseshoe table. But some of the classrooms are different sizes, and they don't fit with the six-foot social distancing. We're in another second grade classroom here at Wampatuck, and this one also has 20 desks in it. But you can see the teachers push them together to make groups of two. Again, there'll only be 10 students in here at a time with the AM PM split. So there'll only be one student sitting at each group. In between our cohorts, all the surfaces will be wiped down. So even if we have a student sitting to the right, both desks will be wiped down before the B cohort comes in the afternoon.
Good morning. My name is Ryan Beatty. I'm the principal of Gates Middle School. Today, I wanted to show you a couple of our learning spaces in preparation for September as we welcome our students back. Before we go into a space where students are going to be learning, I would like you to take a look down our hallway. You'll see that all of our lockers are open at this point. Students this year will not be using lockers. Instead, they will be carrying their belongings with them. So in this learning space, we have a combination of tables and desks. By allowing this combination of furniture, we can fit up to 18 students in this learning area. Each desk, seat to seat, is six feet apart. You'll see up here, this is where the teacher is going to be projecting, using their laptop to project to our screen. You'll see that the majority of rooms have two entrances. So students will enter through one way, exit through another room. And you might also see out there, we have hand sanitizer and wipes. So on the way in, students will use the hand sanitizer, grab a wipe to wipe down their area. On the way out, they will do the same. And then students will, as they transition from class to class, be following kind of the same protocols to keep each learning area safe. Students will be co-horted for their core classes. So what that means is that students will be in this room for four of their, four of their blocks. And for three of their blocks, they will go elsewhere in the school. But for the majority of the day, students will be having a seat, will be using that seat, will be keeping that seat safe and clean throughout the day. In addition to our inside learning spaces, we will be having three outdoor learning spaces, which teachers will be able to bring their students out here. Each learning space, a tent will be over it, and the spaces will be able to fit about 16 to 18 students in it. We anticipate using these spaces for not just instructional learning environments, but also for mask, mask breaks and potential lunch seating. We'll have one here, one over there, and then one in our sixth grade area. So students will have access to them at various places in the building to prevent having students from needing to travel from one side of the building to the other to get to a learning space. So we're excited about this, and we anticipate having potentially more outdoor learning spaces as we continue to let this field be outside.
Hi, my name is Lisa Maguire, and I'm the principal at Situate High School. I'm here today to walk you through a few of our classrooms here at the high school and talk about some of the changes we've made for COVID-19. As students enter the classroom, every room will have hand sanitizer available so that they're able to sanitize. And there will also be wipes available to wipe down desks at the beginning and end of class. Every classroom will have social distancing of six feet or more. And some classrooms have different accommodations that we're working through. For example, this is a science lab classroom. So we're looking at how do we use our space effectively during labs and our shared material? So for example, goggles and lab aprons or art materials to the best of our ability when students can receive kits of supplies that they can use through the year, we'll have that. But we're also going to have sanitizing procedures in place that include UV sterilization, bleach baths, and wiping down of materials that are shared across classes. This is an example of one of the outdoor classrooms that we'll have at Situate High School. This is a 20 by 30, and we'll have a tent over it and will have desks or tables available for students as well as the teacher with electric running out here for class laptops and other electronics. We're looking at other spaces within the building that we can use for inclement weather, but our tents are also equipped with sides, and we're looking into heating mechanisms for the colder days. This is another example of a classroom, one of our second floor math classrooms. Students are still maintaining social distancing of six feet or greater with desks. Windows are open. Sanitizer and sterilization materials are available for each class. So we're currently in the cafeteria, which is set up with students in individual desks with six feet social distancing. Just some other things to consider, we're setting up the library, the small gym, a larger outdoor space in the cafeteria to this specification so that students have other areas to go to for lunch and either for inclement weather or with teachers who need additional space.
We know that you may have many questions or concerns as reopening schools is a complex matter. Our comprehensive reopening plan is available on our school website. And if you have individual or specific questions, you may contact your school building principals. Thank you, and we look forward to seeing our students back on September 16th, the first day of school.
I want to thank our, thank Mr. Pfeifer again for that and for our principals for giving us that overview. I'm hoping that was helpful. And I also want to mention, you know, while I'm reporting on the reopening, just that I know cohort information went out last Friday, I believe, to families. I just wanted to clarify before I forget that the cohorts were alphabetical. And our priority is keeping with the classrooms that you saw there, the six-feet social distancing safety parameters. So in order to make sure that both cohorts that come into the building are even and if the numbers stay below 12, I think we had, or 10, different schools, depending on their size, and even different grades may have to have cut that cohort letter off at a different point. So I know there was initially, everyone thought, you know, it might be easy, A to M or, or, you know, N to Z would come in at all schools. It doesn't work out that simple with the math. So the higher priority is certainly the safety and to ensure that our classrooms were equipped with enough students and the desks six feet apart. So I just wanted to clarify that for parents that, you know, may have a sibling or a friend that at a different school that the cohorting was done with different alphabet letters. That's simply the reason with the focus on safety and to make sure that we have appropriate numbers of students in each of our classes.
Great, thank you. Yeah, I wanted, I want to thank Seth at SCTV for putting together that as well as the principals. And the principals did a great job explaining, and I think Seth did a good job putting that all together. So thank you for that. So quick question, Mr. Burkhead. On the cohorts, as you mentioned, schools had different letter cutoffs, but if they have kids in multiple schools, were we able to accommodate those families?
Yes, that's a great question. And that went, prior to doing that, we made sure with the, with the cohorts that we looked out for other family members and made sure we made those accommodations. And if that's not the case with your family, if you're listening out there, certainly, it's not too late to do that. So if we did miss anybody, that we, another priority was to keep families together. So we certainly can fix that, it's not too late.
Okay, thanks. Any other comments or questions from the school committee?
I'd like to just say that I was able to go to Jenkins School when Seth was there filming and seeing, actually seeing the layout in person. It was, it was kind of like, it was kind of like, oh, okay, this is how it's going to be. It was very not that, I felt better after seeing it, seeing it in person, that the kids are going to be in their space, the teacher's going to have her space. And, you know, I just felt a lot better about the kids going back to school after seeing it. So I think once people get, once, once the kids get into school and once they're in a routine, you know, with the masks and all that, you know, with the sheet. Rebecca had mentioned that in the hallway, they're going to have arrows of where the kids are going to be walking. You know, and I think it'll all work out. I have confidence in the kids.
Great. Yeah, I would echo those sentiments. I saw Ryan filming the Gates School, and I felt the same way. I was like, wow, this actually looks like it's very reasonable and could work. And I like the use of outside space as well. I want to say, I don't know if by locker or what, by design, but I guess we did need some additional seating, and we were able to gain or get some of the old Gates chairs or those one, old school one-armed desks that we were able to utilize. So that was a bonus that we didn't get rid of those. Yeah. And those are a challenge to use, but at least they'll be used for a good purpose. Any other comments, questions from the school committee? All right.
Thanks to Seth again for putting that whole thing together and all the principals and Mr. Burkhead for working on it. And I echo what everybody else said too. It's really, when you're in the building, I've been in a couple of times now, and it really is comforting when you see. So I think those orientation days will be good for students and families to see because, I mean, it's the teachers and the children that make the school alive. I mean, we say this in Situate all the time because of our buildings, that it's not the buildings that make everything come together. It's the people and the little and big, you know, students and amongst the, amongst the whole district. So that's the piece that will, I think, bring this all together in September.
Great. All right. Next item is the first point for public comment. I'm going to try to share a screen here. I've never tried this, I'm going to do it right now before we enter there. See if I can do this. Of course, it's not going to work. Yeah. It's not going to work.
We can see your brain.
I know, it wasn't good. What I want to do is I want to take this, what I want to do is take this opportunity. First of all, we've been averaging, I don't know, somewhere around First of all, we've been averaging, I don't know, somewhere around 250 to 300 participants at each school committee meeting. Historically, we have probably had 10 to 15 at our twice monthly meetings. So there's obviously significant interest in the community and we appreciate that as a school committee. We really do, we want that to continue. And I know that there's been some discussion about how can we have kids back in school if we're meeting remotely? My initial answer is that we're working on a solution to get into the schools to do it, but we also need to find a way to allow you all to attend those meetings. So right now, admittedly, we don't have a great solution. We're looking at some alternatives, but for now, we're going to continue the Zoom because tonight we have 214 folks. And if we go back to doing it in school, we know that, you know, what, I think we're capped at 25 folks. So we really couldn't have any public participation at that point in time. So we're trying to come up with a solution that will allow us to meet in the schools and also allow public comment or participation remotely. But we don't yet have a fantastic solution yet. So for the time being, that's where we are. In relation to public comment, I know that, I hope I don't lose you guys here. We, believe it or not, we actually have policies regarding nearly everything we do on the school committee. And as we've had continued public participation and lots of interest in the public comment section, it got me thinking about how to most effectively manage our public comment section. So we spent, I spent some time looking at how other school committee members do it. I looked at some other meetings and ultimately went back to our policy, which states how, how public comment should be facilitated during our meetings. And what my, what my goal was, and I failed miserably, was to bring up the actual policy. So I'm trying to, I'm trying to find it right now. Hold on, I'm doing it. What I'm just doing is searching for the policies. All of our policies are on the website. Sorry, I'm failing, but I'm going to, I'll recover. Hold on. Sorry. Sorry, I'm going to have to, I have to improve this next time, I apologize. I'm trying to find the policy. I had it already to go on Zoom and I cannot access it. So I was going to recite to everybody exactly what the policy was. Basically, I'll summarize it right now. Is that we want to continue to encourage public participation, but really, this is a school committee meeting held in public and it's not a public meeting. And what we as a community, as a committee, wanted to do is give you guys all access and time to provide comments. It's not supposed to be a Q and A per se. In the interest of maintaining interest in those attending our meetings, we want to tread that line finely and we don't want to turn anyone away from attending our meetings. So if you do ask a question and I say, thank you, thank you for your question and so on, please don't take that negatively. Please note that for those folks that need to be aware of the question you asked, they are taking note of it and may follow up with you at a later point in time. Otherwise, the committee as a whole will be taking that question and, and, and seeing if there's a trend to see if we need to add it to our future agenda items. Okay? I apologize that again, I failed miserly from the technology side and cannot read to you the policy, but I will have that ready for next, next week. With that being said, I'm trying to get back into. All right. With that being said, I'd like to open up the public comment again. I apologize, I failed miserably tech, from the technology perspective, but that goes hand in hand with the way my week's going. I got stung by a bee in my ear and I dropped and scratched my glasses. So it's pretty consistent with how my week's gone. But I'll have that too for next Monday. So that being said, if you do have a question, please go down to the reaction emoji or emoticon, whatever, I don't know the difference, whatever that is, that says reactions. And please raise your hand. Currently, Laura DeLong. You're up.
Okay. Hi. Laura DeLong, I have three kids, a seventh grader at Gates and a first and fifth grader at Wampe Tuck. And my question is around the seventh grader, the middle school lunch, or not question, more of a comment around the middle school lunch. It's more of a concern about the number of kids that'll be together. So I think it's around 130 to 150 kids that'll be in one room. And I understand it's a big room, they'll be spaced six feet apart. But, you know, obviously they won't have masks on, eating lunch and chatting and, you know, how kids are talking loudly. So I just, and I've been in contact with Mr. Beatty about that via email. He, you know, kindly offered for me to come in and take a look at the setup. But I just wanted to bring it to your attention about the number of, of kids that'll be in one room. And that's my sticking point with coming back to school. Thank you so much for all your hard work.
Great, thank you. I know that that is a focus of the, of Mr. Beatty and this school and I'm sure that we'll have a reasonable solution and response to that concern. So thank you. And I apologize to interrupt you, but I do have the guideline for public comments. So rather than delaying until next week, I'd like to read, again, this is on the Situate. For those of you that don't know, we actually do have a website, Situate Public Schools. And under School Committee tab, there's a policy manual. This is Policy B, as in boy, E, as in Edward, D as in dog, H as in Henry, E as in Edward, Guidelines for Public Comment. And again, I just want to read these. This is our policy as a district. "A school committee meeting is a meeting of a government body in which members of the body deliberate over public business. We welcome the attendance of members of the school district community to view your school committee as it conducts its regular business meeting. Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 30A, Section 20F, governs public participation at open meetings covering all public bodies." Okay. "No person shall address a meeting of a public body without permission of the chair and all persons shall, at the request of the chair, be silent. No person shall disrupt the proceedings of a meeting of a public body. If, after clear warning from the chair, a person continues to disrupt the proceedings, the chair may order the person to withdraw from the meeting. And if the person does not withdraw, the chair may authorize a constable or other officer." That's, I don't think that's ever going to happen. "The Situate School Committee believes that the school district community should have an opportunity to comment on issues that affect the school district and are within the scope of the committee's responsibilities. Therefore, the committee has set aside a period of time at each school committee meeting to hear from the public. In addition, the committee believes that an issue requires a dialogue, dialogue with the school district community. The committee, the committee may schedule a separate public hearing on that issue." Here are the general rules for committee's public comment period. Public comment shall be for a period of two, five-minute sessions and shall generally follow the opening of the meeting. The committee reserves the right to rearrange its agenda to accommodate a scheduled, scheduled presenters. Any citizen wishing to speak before the committee shall identify themselves by name and address. No citizen may speak more than once without permission of the chair. All citizens shall speak to the full committee through the chair and shall not address individual members or administrators. Individuals may address topics on the agenda, items specified for public comment or items with the scope of responsibility of the school committee. The chair shall rule out of order any individual who fails to honor the guidelines or who addresses a matter inappropriate for public comment. Any committee member may direct questions to the speaker through the chair in order to clarify questions of the speaker." So in part, that's our policy. By no means am I asking you not to make comments, but I just want to clarify what our policy is and you can read, we all can read it in full on the website. I just know, for me personally, as a chair, trying to manage 200 to 300 participants has been a challenge. This is an area that I need to grow and I've been resorting to this policy. We can revisit it at a time in the future, but again, this is not to discourage anyone for participating. We want folks to participate. But just know, we're trying not to make this a Q and A session. We will have significant business to get through as, as the weeks and months progress into the school year. So I appreciate you hearing me. Sorry if it's not to your liking, but unfortunately, that's the policy or in part that we need to follow. So again, I thank you all. With that being said, John Fitzgerald.
Thank you for letting me speak. I appreciate it. I'm John Fitzgerald and I teach at Gates. I just had a quick question. I understand that administration's working closely with facilities people and the school nurses in order to do some, for lack of a better term, inspections around the school regarding air quality, HVAC, and other safety precautions. I know that this is happening on a daily basis. When these data points get filled or when people are done with this, will there be something released to the teachers, students, parents, just ensuring everyone that the schools are indeed safe to go back to, for one? And two, ultimately, who does this final responsibility of the safe school belong to? Is it the Board of Health? Is it administration? This isn't something I expect to get answered tonight. This is more something I just wanted to, a talking point that I wanted to bring up. But will any of this data be released to the general public and the teachers once it's accumulated? Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Thank you for your comment. We are going to move on to Jennifer O'Neil.
Peter, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Actually, I'm just going to make a quick comment and it was, it was based on you not having access to the policy. But since you now have access to the policy, I just want to say, I am one of those 10 people that you referenced that are usually at the school committee meetings in the high school or at Gates. And I just want to say to those listening out there, whether they're participating on Zoom or watching on the Facebook Live, that I think you are running the meetings very well. You are including everybody, you're letting people speak, you're letting them be heard. I know it's probably not what everyone wants to hear, but, you know, you are, as you said, a public board that is meeting in public, but not at a public meeting. So again, I think you guys are doing a great job and just wanted to make my comment public that, you know, I welcome all of these people that are participating right now to come to a meeting when there's, you know, something on the agenda that's not as exciting as, say, school reopening. I don't know, maybe start times or even, I don't know, student parking fees. But, you know, we'll leave it at that. Thanks, Peter.
Thank you very much, Ms. O'Neil. I appreciate the comments. And again, I apologize for not, for being technologically challenged. It wasn't the way I was expecting it to work, but still be it. Up next, Shan Morrissey.
You unmuted me, thank you. Shan Morrissey, I am a teacher at Gates. Mr. Burkehead, I think, said that there was a 72% response on the survey about what type of schooling families are planning on. And I'm wondering, as a district, how we have been working on developing a more robust remote program? I think that I heard at the last school committee meeting, a lot of parents were feeling like they didn't really have enough information to make a decision about remote or not. So I'm a little concerned about that 72% return rate and our developing a remote plan. Another question I think falls under the purview of the school committee is, in terms of monitoring bathrooms and cafeterias, I'm wondering where we're going to get the staff to provide that? And if there's money in the budget or plans being made to address things like bathroom monitoring? And I have 10 other questions, but I won't ask at this point.
Unfortunately, just one question at a time.
I'm not, you, you didn't let me finish. I just, I was saying, I'm not going to ask all those questions. Thank you.
You're welcome. In terms of the survey, I know the building principals have been working diligently on providing finality and more clarity to the remote learning. And those have been addressed at, at the building level. In terms of the additional staff, that's something that's always being looked at and we will continue to do so. Thank you. Mr. Scott Paletti.
Good evening, folks. John Scott Paletti, English Department Chair. I'm asking or bringing up this point on behalf of a colleague in the English Department, but in full disclosure, it's also a situation that applies to my own situation as a parent and a educator in the district. Earlier today, in the Commissioner's Weekly Update, just to read from that very briefly, Commissioner O'Reilly has recommended that districts that have adopted a hybrid or remote learning model should prioritize the children of teachers for full-time, in-person learning when feasible, in addition to prioritizing high-needs students. A question that I'm not expecting an answer to now is, is the district planning on following that recommendation? And regardless of the answer to that, when would staff be notified of that decision?
Thank you for your comment. It is duly noted and, and Scott, I truly appreciate your comments saying you don't expect an answer because I don't want to expect that you're going to receive an answer. But that is a reasonable question. And again, these are things that are being looked at and I would expect that we would have an answer at some point. I hope that's acceptable. Thank you. Greg Lassard.
Hi, I'm Greg Lassard, band director, fourth through eighth grade in Situate Public Schools. I would like to encourage the school committee and the administrators to consider calling for a voluntary COVID test for all of the teachers and staff before the school year starts. If that could be paid for, that'd be great. But regardless, I would appreciate it if we, as a body, were moving forward to try to eliminate any asymptomatic carriers before the school year starts. Thank you.
Thank you. Cheryl Pace.
Hi again, my name is Cheryl Pace. I'm a teacher and parent of three in the district. Now that I've wrapped my brain around the fact that I'll be in front of 100-plus students per week, and we know that masks save lives, I'm wondering why teachers are being given just two masks per week? Masks have an expiration date of how long you can wear them and re-wear them, the same mask. And I don't know if medical personnel are required to purchase their own PPE. Maybe they are, but just wanted to drop that out there, that if, if, if we could get more masks, it'd be awesome. Thank you.
Okay, I think that's reasonable. I don't know the number of masks you'll be receiving. I would expect that there will be enough, but duly noted. Thank you. There are no other, I'm seeing no other comments at this point in time. If that's the case, we will move on. And just so you all are aware, there is one other spot for public comment on our agenda. And just so you all are aware, there is one other spot for public comment on our agenda. But again, I appreciate all those that made comments and/or questions tonight. They're respectful of the policy that we have, and I hope that this can be a model for us moving forward again. I want, we, the school committee in its entirety wants public participation. We do. We just need to make sure that we handle it appropriately, and I'm sorry if I'm being the bad guy. But I appreciate you all. Okay, moving on. Yes.
Sorry, before we go on, so for the questions that were asked tonight, how is an answer going to get out there? Is it going to be on the Safe and Strong Task Force website? Or if the people that have questions, especially email you or Superintendent Burkhead to then get a response? I just want to make sure that we don't leave these questions out there.
Well, I think in a lot of cases that there are answers to some of those questions and others, it looks like most of them were from the teachers. I would recommend they go to their leadership and then they can filter those up to, to the administration.
Okay. I just want to make sure that if people do follow up and there is an answer that we provided.
Yep.
Chairman Gates, might I add to that?
Yes.
Yes, all those questions were excellent. They were very reasonable and I appreciate you trying to expedite the meeting and, and use public comment, but I do want to let those folks know that they have great questions that if you want to direct them to me, especially the ones about from the teachers, we can answer all of them pretty simply. So I'd be happy to do that if you want to email me directly or one of our principals. Parents can do the same thing. All those questions were very reasonable and respectful, so I'd be more than happy to respond to everyone individually. I know our principals well too, so be happy to answer those questions, but I also know it's important to state them publicly as well. And one, just for, because, you know, while I'm on and because it's probably for the safety of everyone, one question I'll take right now is that we will be releasing publicly all this, all the quality, air quality and, and testing we do in the buildings to, to everybody. I think that's very important and valid, so I will take that one out because I know it's a question that most people have.
Great, thank you. Next on the agenda, new business, parking fees. Dr. Dutch.
Good evening. As many parents and high school students know, we charge a fee for parking at the high school. We've decided that since students will only be parking there a little less than 50% of the time, that we would be reducing the parking fees to 50% of the normal rate. We, we, that money does not come to the district in the past, nor would it this year. It goes to the town directly for the purpose of maintaining the lots. We have notified the town administrator that it was our intent to, to do this out of fairness to the students that are parking at the high school. So we just wanted to put that on your radar, make sure you were aware of what we were doing and its impact.
I know we at least have one, one family out there that's happy with that. Great. Any questions from the school committee? Seeing none, we will be moving on to the subcommittee updates. This week, we have the very exciting policy subcommittee. I'd like to hand it over to, well, we have two representatives on that. It's Ms. Lindblom and Mr. Long. They're part of the subcommittee, policy subcommittee. So with that, I can hand it over to them and/or the superintendent, not quite sure who's going to take the lead on this one.
I can let Mike take the lead if he wants.
I'll just start with, so we met last week. We had a good conversation about the different policies that are on the agenda for tonight. I, I think some of the changes that are in there are going to, you know, benefit our staff and students to make sure that they stay safe throughout the school year in a hybrid model and just making sure that it keeps everyone on the same page in terms of this is what the expectation is to keep everyone safe. I mean, typically in the past, the superintendent has gone through the policy changes, but Superintendent Burkhead do that unless we're going to do it differently.
That's fine. Thank you, Mr. Long. So I'm going to have the assistance with a few of these. This is unique, there's, there's multiple. So tonight will be a first reading. In fairness to the school committee, allow them time to read these, digest them, and then we'll be happy to answer questions, you know, either tonight or the next meeting before you vote. We've provided you an executive summary, so, you know, because some of these are multiple pages, just to kind of give you an overview. These were taken directly from the Mass Association of School Committees' recommendations. So they're in line with what the recommendations are, which were pretty much in line with what the Department of Education, elementary and secondary education is also sent out. So I, I've asked the first couple, I know Assistant Superintendent Arnold has been working on, so I will turn it over to Jen to kind of introduce and give a quick summary of the first three that you'll have in your packets.
Thank you, Superintendent Burkhead. Good evening. These policies, AC, ACAB, and ACABR, were looked at in response to Title IX, the new Title IX regulations. So what happened is they, the Mass came out with a new ACAB policy. And our ACAB policy generally only addressed sexual harassment. But with the new Title IX regulations, the ACAB is supposed to address all forms of harassment. So in looking at the policy, our legal counsel felt that we should divide it or take out all of the processes or procedures that were included in the policy, because the policy should be broad language and the procedure should be in a separate document. So in this case, ACABR. So that's what happened with these two policies. And looking at the new AC nondiscrimination policy, the, it sort of became a domino that this ACAB affected the wording in AC. And AC, also our current AC policy is very long and it has all of the process or the procedures in it, which legal counsel advised should be out and separate in a regulation document. So she is now working on an ACR document, which we will have for the next school committee Any questions?
Nope.
Yep, I'll finish up. Thank you, Ms. Arnold. I'll finish up with the next, the next one in your packet, EBC. Is emergency plans supplemental to our current emergency policy? Obviously with COVID, this is a more detailed, specific to the COVID emergency. And I'll summarize one, there's multiple pages here, but give you a little flavor of what this one entails. Talks a lot about the back-to-school plan. And a lot of this we've done already, but it's a good guideline for having that plan and what it should entail. And the document talks about the back-to-school plan shall constitute the policy of the school district during the pandemic emergency, and the superintendent shall exercise the authority provided in law to carry out the plan as needed. So that kind of gives you some guidelines on, you know, again, it breaks it down to time on learning, grading, all the things that we have included in the plan. So that should act as a summary for us. We use that to guide our work. The next document is face coverings. And I'd ask that we table this particular document, because as we know, there's ever-changing data and research, and relatively recently, we received some information on certain type of face coverings, like the gators that you pull up, and some are not as good as others, and it's not reflected in this original document from MASC. So we wanted to be, you know, we wanted to bring this to our health advisory that we're meeting with Wednesday with the Board of Health and school nurses and our school doctors before we kind of vote on this one, because there may be some different language we want to include to encompass those different face coverings that aren't, aren't nearly as protective, and that we want to get a little more specific on this policy, because it'll be in our handbook. So I would ask that you table that one and we come up with a different one for the next meeting. And the last, the last documents are the remote learning. The original document was from last March. So some of it on there is basically the how-to of remote, when you go into an emergency situation. It talks about what the plan will include, safety for all students, resources and services equitable to meet the needs and circumstances of all students. So some, some important information that I feel is embedded in our plan, but it's again, some good documentation to have. And then the final addendum to the remote learning plan is, is a little bit newer, and it's more like a checklist for developing the plan that will be helpful for us as school leaders, but also as the school committee to continue to develop strong plans, but also to assess them and improve them. That document is a bunch of bullets on there, you can see, and they ask some questions to kind of measure our document and to kind of, you know, continue to improve it. So for example, some specific items to consider in developing a plan. When is the remote learning appropriate? Designing a point person for the district, which would be me. Equity is a big thing in all these documents, which is important. Responsibilities of remote educators, special constituencies, that's spelled out in the DESI's plan. So a lot of this is redundant, but some of it's new and it's also a good document, I think, to have to kind of assess our current document. That's, that's all we have for this evening.
Okay. So this is, this is technically our first reading and all these are in our backup. And then do we anticipate voting on these next? Do we have two or three readings on these? Just, I just want to make sure the school committee's prepared next, when appropriate to vote on them. Will we be prepared either way?
In the past, Peter, we've typically done two readings and then voted, unless there's a lot of questions on the policy.
Okay. So we'll anticipate, I guess with the exception, all the face coverings will have to be revised. We can probably look to, to vote most of these next, our next meeting.
Will the face covering one be, will we have voted on in time for the handbooks? For, to get into the handbooks or is that, have to have that like as an addendum?
I, I think, Superintendent Burkhead, I think that if, if we can get the face coverings revised, reflective of what you find out on Wednesday, I'm assuming the school committee may be okay in approving it next, next Monday, assuming that's in time to get into the, all these policies, to get into the handbooks.
We can do that. It's a, it's a one pager, so there's not a lot of edits to it, so I can have that in your hands by Wednesday afternoon.
Okay. Yeah, we'll see to make sure, we'll still be able to get all these updates into the handbooks, correct? Okay.
Yes, yes.
So if this, if the, if the school committee is in favor of it, even if it's a first reading, we most likely can approve it, I think. Okay, any other questions or comments about the policies? Okay, this is the next and final phase of public comments. As usual, choose the reaction tab at the bottom and raise your hand, and I will ask you to unmute. Milena Davidova, and I apologize, I did not ask prior participants to state their name and either address or schools of which they either teach or have a child at, so I will ask of those upcoming.
Yes, hi. My name is Milena Davidova. I have incoming seventh grader and ninth grader. We signed up for the remote program, but we really haven't seen much of how the plan will look. Does the school committee or the principals plan on giving a question and answer period for those families? And when will the plan be actually available to the families to look at?
Superintendent Burkhead, I'll direct this to you. Would you be able to provide just a very brief update? I think that we have provided some information to this date, but perhaps there's further information.
Yeah, I think I highlighted just a little bit in our, in the opening that we hope to finish this work tomorrow and have this document, a revised remote plan, hybrid plan out to our families in the Thursday thoughts. That's our goal. So you should have that information absolutely after receiving that. You can read, reach out to our principals directly. They'd be happy to answer any specific questions you have.
Thank you. Next up is Eileen Roddy.
Hi, Eileen Roddy, teacher at Gates and STA co-president. I just have a comment about, about the comment policy, comment about the comments. I just want to say that it's disappointing that questions are not being answered and that in particular, the questions of teachers are being sort of left hanging. I understand the, the reasoning behind some of that, but I want to point out that there are not a lot of opportunities for teachers to make their feelings public and to bring up issues that are troubling to them in a public setting where parents and administrators and school committee are present. I, I thank Mr. Burkhead for acknowledging that and for addressing at least one of those questions. It's not always just about getting an answer to your question. It's about making other people aware that you're aware of an issue and that you have concerns about an issue, and that brings that issue to the public's attention. The union has been criticized in recent weeks on not making our position known, and this is the second meeting, actually the third meeting, where we've tried to bring issues in our statement forward and been discouraged in that, and I find that disappointing. I wish, I hope that you can reconsider that policy and maybe make more of an effort. It's, it's not the same to email the administration with a question, because other people don't become privy to those answers. So I just want to make that clear. I, I know that there were a lot of teachers tonight that had questions, and we only heard from a few of them, and I can't help but wonder if they would discouraged by that.
Well, we're always willing to hear any comments at this time, and I did not deflect or, or, or hope that folks would be turned off in that. We're willing to hear any comments. It's more of a treading the line of question and answer session versus a public comment section. And that's a difficult line for us to draw, and I recognize that it's not the easiest one to do. And we recognize all the concerns of families as well as teachers and staff. We hope this continues to be an opportunity for them to voice those concerns. I think that what I'm trying to manage is that we may not have answers or, or, or require answers to those comments. It's kind of, I was trying to think of an analogy, it's kind of like Jeopardy. When you answer, you know, you answer a question in jeopardy, you answer it in the form of a question, right? So we just need to try to hold folks to making public comments as opposed to making straight-up Q and A, though we, obviously we will, can make exceptions, but we want to hear concerns. Of course we do, and this is the proper format to do that. I hope that nobody was discouraged. I didn't see any hands go down. I apologize if there were, but no, this is the format if you'd like to make your comments heard, absolutely. It's just the difference between a question and answer versus a public comment section.
Thank you, Mr. Gates.
You're welcome. Any other questions or comments from the public? Seeing none, we will move on. Correspondence, there was no correspondence. My favorite part of the meeting warrants by Dr. Dutch.
Not sure what that says, if that's your favorite part of the meeting, but here we Warrant number S200820, the amount of $104,154.21 was signed by school committee member Lindblom. I'll share with you the large items, over $5,000, under central administration supply, $7,815.55 for masks from three different vendors. Private school tuition, $60,486.22 to three different private schools. to three different private schools. Building maintenance, nine thousand, four hundred and eighty-nine dollars to Duffy signs for signage for the schools. The signs that are going on the floors and on the doors and throughout the building to remind people about social distancing, wearing masks and traffic flow patterns. So those are all been delivered at this point. And then four thousand, two hundred and twenty dollars for legal services. So those are, those are the big ticket items in that, in this warrant.
Great, thank you. And those just to be read, no votes necessary, correct?
Correct.
Great, thank you. Okay, moving on, other business, Superintendent Burkhead. Introducing Ms. Bulbert.
Yep, thank you Chairman Gates. You know, last week we had some folks and I think all of the meetings, you know, had some questions on special education. And I wanted to give Ms. Bulbert another week. I think she's been here two or three to get her feet wet and we're glad to have her. She's doing a great job, but she's going to be able to report out a little bit tonight for some information. And each week we'll try to get more and more information on, you know, what people are interested in and need to know. So we're hoping this is helpful tonight. So I'm going to try to pull her presentation up and then I'll turn it over to Ms. Bulbert.
Me too. Good evening. Thank you for inviting me tonight. I think it's my fourth week, maybe. It's gone by very quickly, but I've been here since August 2nd and getting to know everyone and really impressed with the, the school district and the caring people that I have met. So yeah, if you want to start the slideshow, if you can just hit it from the beginning, I just want to do a somewhat of a brief update on special education during the time of, you know, our, with the focus on the reentry, starting kind of with a little bit of a historical review of what happened in the spring. If you, if you, I don't know if you hit slideshow from the beginning, does that work? Do you have to enable editing?
Can you see, can you see my screen?
I just see the first slide though.
Oh, do you want to go to the next one?
Yes.
Okay, just, just let me know when you want to. I'll be, I'll be there.
Think you've got to hit enable editing.
Probably.
What's the matter?
Yeah, hit enable editing and then hit slideshow from the, you know.
At the very top, Bill, it says enable editing, protected view.
Why, you're not seeing it?
No, we're just seeing that front page.
Oh, so what do I got to do?
See if you could almost like download it to enable editing in the front top.
All right, I gotta stop here. Sorry about that.
Sorry.
Do I have to download it? Save it to my computer?
Maybe, I don't know.
She is a co-host, so if she wants to share, she can.
Oh, I could, I could do that.
Yeah, you can.
Yeah, all right, why don't I do that? So I go to wait, how do I share my screen?
Share a screen.
So let me go back.
You got it, you're good.
All right, but this is, I jumped ahead because this was the slide I was on, hold on. Wait.
You're okay there.
I know, okay, hold on. Fingers crossed. All right, does that work? All right.
Yes.
Okay.
Nice job.
Yeah, don't.
You made me look like I couldn't figure it out.
Okay, let me go back. All right, so basically, sorry about that, everybody. The effect of the pandemic on special education, so when this pandemic happened, we were faced with, you know, an emergency health situation where the IDEA legal requirements, they never stopped. They didn't change, yet we were not able to provide all the services on students' IEPs because we didn't have the students in front of us. So we were kind of in this quandary of not being able to provide all the IP services, having to go full remote in an emergency situation. Yet, under IDEA, the, the laws never stopped. And also, a lot of our students needed specialized instruction in person or related services, like their therapies, to make progress. So some of our students did not benefit from remote learning. So the dilemma that we had was how do we provide these mandated services that are agreed upon in the IEPs when we're unable to meet face to face with students? How were we able to conduct evaluations without being able to meet face to face? Because again, the timelines for our psychological evaluations and evaluations in other areas were basically late. And how could we meet the needs of special ed students for whom remote learning was not beneficial? So these were not things just situat was dealing with, all the school districts across the country were dealing with these kinds of things. And even though we had wanted a waiver on timelines from the state, the state was not able to give it to us because it's under IDEA, under the federal law. Oops, sorry. Okay, so I've heard from several parents, I've heard from staff, I know in my previous district that there's been a wide variety of experiences with remote learning. Some of them very, you know, not very positive. Some of them were, were good, some students did make good progress. But we do recognize that remote learning has been a challenging situation for many of our students and our families. Parents were put in the position of being both a parent and a teacher or a paraprofessional. I don't know if you heard this expression in situat, but we heard this that basically a lot of us were learning to fly the plane while we were building the plane. We were still trying to figure that out. And the guidance from the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education changed frequently. Like every week there was another change or an update. So in the beginning of this experience, we went from, oh, kind of like take a break, just give resources and supports to, oh, you need to be teaching students, but don't teach them anything new to, oh, you need to be focused on power standards. And all this has affected all of our students, not just our special ed students. So to be put mildly, it was a challenge for a lot of us. So given that, the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education has recognized the importance of in-person learning, if at all possible. Some districts are going fully remote, some are going, most are probably going the hybrid model. But the Department of Education has recommended, if possible, to prioritize these students for in-person learning wherever possible. So our early learners, students for whom, you know, they have maybe some family issues, maybe lack of internet access, students that are homeless or students that are in foster care. Also, students that just never benefited from remote learning or just were disengaged. But most particularly, students that are either special ed and an English language learner or students that have intensive disabilities. So as, as the state put it, students with complex and intensive needs. And this was guidance from July 24th. This was actually pretty much right off of their, the DESI guidance. So what are the students with complex and significant needs? Those are students that are already identified as being high needs through the IEP process. And that is on the primary disability level of the, of need. It's a form that parents don't see, but it is something that the teachers do. It's based on the IP services. In general, we're looking at are the services provided outside of the general classroom, so they're in a special ed setting? Who, who is providing the services? Are they special ed teachers or related service providers as opposed to paraprofessionals or gen ed teacher? And are they getting services more than seventy-five percent of the day? So that is how the department has made the criteria of who is an intensive, has high needs. Other factors that they wanted us to consider are those that cannot engage in remote learning because of their disability-related needs and students that may use augmentative communication, so that students that don't, aren't able to communicate unless they have a device. So those are the students that they wanted us to prioritize first. And this was guidance from the July 9th memo that they sent. So just a brief recap of what our reentry plans are. So parents have the choice to have their kids do full remote if that's what they feel is best for their children. One of the issues is if students have a lot of services on their IEPs, that's really difficult to do. Students that were considered low-level needs, that might be quite easy to do. The other issue is that not all students can learn independently, students on IEPs. However, that's a parent's choice and as the special ed department, we'll do our best to provide all the services that we can if, if that is the choice that they are choosing. Then the next plan is of course the hybrid plan, which is what we are most focused on. And so that's a mix of in-person and remote instruction and including teletherapy, so services from occupational therapists or speech and language therapists. Hopefully, students will be able to receive most of their IP services, if not all of them. Some of students, based on the criteria that I just discussed, can attend the four full days. That will help us to provide all those services on their IEPs. And I just want to note that if there are any changes to what the agreed-upon IEP said and what we can provide, the special ed staff will need to have a conversation with parents and discuss how because of the remote learning model or because of the hybrid model, we're not able to fully implement the IP. And the state has kindly given us a sample of what is called a special ed, COVID-19 special ed learning plan. It's similar to the spring, which was called the individual remote learning plan, similar to that, except this covers hybrid and in-person. And then of course, if we do go back in person, it's honestly much easier for all of us to provide the, the services and IP in the IEPs when we have the students in front of us. So the department has given, again, more guidance on when we're changing services. I'm not going to read the entire slide, but it is from PowerPoint that they provided a couple of weeks ago. Basically, they're just talking about how important it is to have this conversation with parents to talk about how the different models of instruction that we're using and, and that's all part of what Superintendent Burkhead and the, all the principals and everyone is steering with the safe and strong reopening plan. But again, if there is a difference of how we're going to deliver the IP services, we would need to talk about exactly how and where those services will be provided. So for an example, I could give you if a student had a paraprofessional six and a half hours a day, but the student is only coming in person two days a week, it's going to be really difficult to provide that paraprofessional six and a half hours a day, five days per week. So again, we're going to do all that we can, but there are going to be some situations where it might not be feasible. So the learning plans that I mentioned, again, this is all right from the state, copied from what they said. Basically, during the hybrid model, we need to get parental input regarding how we're proposing special ed services in the hybrid model, how accommodations, modifications and services may be different than in the IP and what the parent should expect in terms of communication with the special ed team. The other issue that we need to consider is compensatory services. So usually, if a district is unable to provide the IP services that were assigned by the parent and if the student showed regression because of the lack of services, the district would basically need to provide extra services or compensatory services. So the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education has recognized that a lot of students may have regressed, not just special ed students. And that since this is a really unique situation, that they're taking a different twist on this compensatory services issue. So the, it's a three-pronged approach. The first approach is general education. So just like all special ed students, you know, we want them to access general education and that's sort of the default that they would be able to participate in general education first. The state is asking that general education assess student needs and reorient, reorient students to learning first, similar to a tiered intervention model. So I'm not sure what the experience has been in situat with RTI, response to intervention, or MTSS, multi-tiered system of supports. But there are different layers of plans and interventions available for all students that struggle regardless of whether they're on an IEP or a 504 plan. So there's something called a D cap, a district curriculum accommodation plan. And so when the students come back to us and teachers or staff notice that they are struggling or maybe there's, you know, something different, like maybe there's social emotional needs where previously that was not recognized, there are, you know, takes a village, it's not just special ed, but there would be possibly other general educators assisting with that. So that's prong one. Prong two is called the COVID-19 compensatory services. And of course, DESI loves acronyms, so they're calling it CCS. And that basically is remediating the loss of skills or loss of knowledge because of a lack of effective progress because of suspension of in-person services related to the spring or, you know, to the COVID-19. So it's not just in general compensatory services, but specifically because of COVID-19. And then finally, new IP services. So that would be because of a disability-related need that the team would meet and look at additional services that would be needed, that would be put in the IP. The state recommends that we do assessments for this regression and for compensatory services by December 15th for students that were deemed the significant and complex needs or for any students that did not receive any special education services in the spring when they should have. So they have kind of put a little deadline, which is not until December. Obviously, schools will be working with kids and meeting them where they're at and trying to, you know, promote their progress before December, but they wanted us to prioritize that group to look at compensatory services at that time. The state says that it's not, they're not giving us a, a deadline of when the services would need to be provided. My goal in getting kids back is providing the, the services that they have on their IEPs as much as we can and then looking at later how we can put in extra services. But I want to make sure that we are doing what is in the plan for now. Other concerns related to special education and what's, you know, the past remote learning experiences is that we weren't able to complete our evaluations done. We weren't able to complete the evaluations because we couldn't do standardized testing online. And so those will need to be completed as soon as possible. We're trying to prioritize initial eligibility evaluations because those are the students that haven't been on an IEP. And so they haven't had the exposure to the special And so they haven't had the exposure to the specialized instruction. Whereas if it's a reevaluation, they would have like the current IP and they would still be getting those services. And then in terms of IP meetings, my understanding is that they weren't all conducted. I understand why the evaluation meetings weren't conducted, but my understanding is that some of the annual reviews were not done. And again, the timeline never stopped. So we are, if we are behind in that, we need to start catching up on that. So you can imagine coming back, basically, you know, staff not being able to evaluate for, you know, from March through June and then having a big caseload in front of them to to get their evaluations done. So I thank all the parents for their patience. We are trying our best and it is a challenge to do that. So in summary, basically, our goal is provide as many of the IP services on the plans as possible. And we will work with families if for whatever reason they're choosing a remote plan. Any changes or to services because of the hybrid or remote learning model, they need to be discussed and they will be documented. The state does not recommend that we change the IP because of an inability to provide the services because parents have the right to the state put IP. So that's why instead we would do that, the remote learning, I'm sorry, the COVID-19 learning plan instead. Parents will be notified if they have not already, if their child's IP qualifies for that four day in person model based on the state's criteria. We would absolutely love to have all of our kids with us, but we have to temper that with safety and being able to have only half the class at a time to make sure that we have social distancing of six feet. So unfortunately, we had to make a cutoff and we're just following the state's guidelines for that. The other thing I just want to say, I've met some families, but I'm going to have an open office hour Wednesday morning because I know this is really complicated and confusing. And I'd like to also get to know, you know, some of the parents. So I put that in there and I did send an email to families this weekend inviting them. And if you didn't get it, you can always email me and I will send it to you. And that's it. So thank you and I'd be happy to answer any questions from the school committee.
Mike, I think you're up.
Sorry, sorry. Michelle, thanks very much for that. I think that for those folks who have children who receive IP services, I think that it gives them some, a lot of confidence that we are making progress on it. Obviously, there are a lot of challenges ahead, but we are addressing their needs as best we can. So thank you for for presenting today. And also thank you for having the Zoom meeting on Wednesday. I'll ask the committee if they have any questions. I'll start with Mr. Long.
I don't at this time, but Michelle, thank you for that presentation. It was very helpful.
Ms. Limlong.
Yep, thank you, Michelle, for that presentation and for the upcoming Zoom meeting for parents. I think that's very helpful. That will be very, very helpful. My question about is about the the students that are eligible for the four day in person. You said there's a cutoff. So what about what happens to the kids that are eligible, but they're unable to attend because of, you know, the safety protocols?
So what I meant was the cutoff was we were prioritizing the ones with the high needs, even though, you know, all of our students, we want to prioritize all our students, but we weren't able to offer it for low level needs or moderate needs. That by sticking with the high needs, we made sure that they came in. And then there might be some other factors that Desi has also put out there. And it's hard because, you know, we can't share any confidential information. So we can't say, well, your neighbor's child just made it into the high needs based on the IP services. But if parents feel like the, you know, the form was miscalculated, they could reach out to the liaison or to me and I'll take a look again. And I know the principals have been great as well in in trying to make sure that we prioritize the high needs first. And unfortunately, that was the cutoff. So the high needs will definitely come if they want to.
And so is that, Desi is saying to prioritize those high needs kids, but is it a mandate that if they qualify that we have to provide the four days?
Or is it? There is no mandate. It is a recommendation and we are following it because it is best for the students in our, you know, some of the students in our intensive programs like the ILC or the PLC. And it's harder for them to learn, you know, remotely through the computer. But if for a medical reason or any other reason, a family wanted to stick with remote, we'll work with them on that. So we're just, we're, you know, really happy that we're able to to offer more in person, at least to the high needs for now.
Thank you.
Sorry, I took a quick recess. Is Nicole, any questions?
Thanks, Michelle, for that information. I don't have many questions at all, really, just, I guess, for the four day kids. If if you're at like a middle, the middle school or high school level, I suppose elementary as well, if you're there for, you know, your Monday, Tuesday cohort A, then on Thursday, Friday, do you have any? How far are we in the planning on what that day will look like since instruction might be repetitive for those kids on Thursday, Friday?
I probably would defer to the principals, but I think that again, it's students that are receiving a lot of their services in the special ed setting. So the special ed teacher would continue to teach them. They wouldn't be doing the same exact lesson.
All right, yep. So they have space for that and everything because they'll be mostly in small group instruction. Okay. Um, I think that was it. I did have another question, but it totally flew out of my head. If I think, I don't even know what it was, so.
All right. Michelle, you did. You did make mention of this, but I just wanted to, I guess, get a clearer picture of the IPs, annual meetings and the evals. Those that are, I guess, passed through, those will take precedence over the new evals and IPs, correct?
So actually, the in certain, in terms of like a new one due in September or October or November, yes. But the state urges us to prioritize students that the initial eval was not completed because the students who are being reevaluated, they already have an IP and they're already getting services. And we don't want to deny fate to a student that maybe should have been picked up in the spring and should have been receiving services. So again, we're juggling with that and working with the psychologists of how to best, you know, do this. And it's it's hard because, you know, like I said, there, you know, some some evals were maybe done, but not totally finished. Or, you know, there might just be one little piece and they could, they could pull those together pretty quickly once students come back. But it's going to take a while.
Challenge. Do you have any idea of the, is, do you have any ideas of the numbers of that initial eval?
I think initial eval, I don't know exactly initial eval. I think elementary might be like 40 evals, but some might have been already done or pieces done. And that's just the elementary and that doesn't include like out of district. So it's quite behind.
Okay. You, just like Mr. Burkhead. So Mr. Burkhead has been here now for 54 days and you have been here for 24. So in addition to learning the districts, you're dealt with trying to come up with processes and and making sure that we're following guidelines. So we appreciate your significant effort. And we know that it's a significant challenge and we appreciate having you here.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments from the school committee?
I remembered my question. It was about remote. So I might have missed it because I had a herd of elephants come through my house, which was my children. But I had to relocate. So but maybe you already touched on this in your presentation. But for our remote cohort, will they be able to receive? They'll be receiving any services remotely or is it? How will that look for a remote family?
So it all really depends on the IP. So we, again, we aim to provide as much as we can. Obviously, if they're doing remote, they're be most likely zoomed in unless it's a situation where the child receives therapy and the parent wanted to bring the child in just for therapy. I mean, that could be possibly worked out. But the problem is the more services that are provided, the harder it is to do fully remote. So if a student had six and a half hours of services, like say a paraprofessional all day, that'd be really hard to have the paraprofessional with the student, you know, through the computer all day. And we know that too much screen time isn't good for kids, especially for younger kids. But that's why that discussion back and forth is so important with the families to prioritize what can we do, what makes sense? And then also the the right stay with that previous IP so that we would just have this plan. Well, this is what we can do during a remote, but you still have this other IP so that when you do come back in person, you haven't given away those rights of those services. So for example, that paraprofessional all day, if that was on your plan before, when you come back, you know, it's still on the IP.
Got it. Thank you. That makes full sense.
Any other questions or comments? Michelle, once again, thanks. I think, you know, I think that this is going to be one of our biggest area, biggest challenges, I think. So we're glad to have you on our side. The families are, I think, you are a great asset to our families, so I appreciate it. And hopefully, next time we talk to you, we have some great positive things to share. So thank you.
Thank you.
All right. So moving on the agenda, future agenda items, we have the handbooks that also the second readings of the policy. I also wanted to mention to the school committee and to those that are still here. The school committee will be conducting another workshop on Wednesday of this week. The public is not necessarily invited. It's a workshop for us and the theme of this. This week's workshop is superintendent evaluation. As part of our role as a school committee, we are in charge of reviewing the performance of the superintendent. There's been some, I believe to be some significant changes in that process. So we thought it was important to bring in MASP to provide the changes and the process that we need to follow in order to properly complete the evaluation next year. Obviously, it's coming in a very, very busy time, but we felt it important to learn this process now at the beginning of the year rather than learning about it later as we try to complete the evaluation. So that will be held Wednesday. If you do see an invitation via Peachtree, it's just notification as it is technically a public meeting, but it will just be for the school committee members and Superintendent Burkhead. Anything else? School committee members, any other comments, questions?
I'll just add that, oh, go ahead. Sorry, Mike.
No, no, go ahead.
Just that Assistant Superintendent Jen Arnold and I are talking about our next diversity, equity and inclusion meeting. So we're trying to set that up just so everybody's aware that that's, we're trying to be mindful of all of the hard work and for teachers and administrators and parents and everyone. So we're trying to like not put that on any kind of a back burner because it's a priority, but also balance it with us doing all this work as well and our teachers too. So it's always been on our radar every week and I think we're just trying to wait along until we see a little opening of light. So we're hoping within the next two weeks to get that moving forward. So we probably won't have an update next week, but maybe the following week or the week after that, so we can have a meeting and within the next two weeks or three weeks.
Great. Mr. Long?
Yeah, in the last MASP session that we did, we talked about creating a school committee protocol doc. I mean, is that going to be on an upcoming agenda?
So Ms. Brindelini has been hard at work on that. What we're in the process now of is determining how we're supposed to review that as a committee. Is it required to be in public or can we hold it during one of our workshops to review? So that is in process. The document has been, the initial draft has been completed. Ms. Brindelini has shared with me, but again, we're trying to figure out what the process is so we don't violate any open meeting laws to figure out how we review and or vote on that. So I expect to get some guidance on Wednesday from from MASP and how best to do that.
Okay, I know that ties in pretty well to that public comment policy. Hopefully, if we review that at the same time, want to make sure we do that. And then Superintendent Burkhead, I apologize if I got this wrong, but earlier in the meeting, you had talked about the remote plan being finalized. Is that going out through email to the district once it's completed? Or is that something we can get an update on it at our next school committee meeting?
I could do both. It could be as, it could be done as early as for Thursday thoughts to send out and then I could summarize it in Monday's meeting if that might be the most efficient way to get in people's hands and give you all a chance to look at it. And then I can give a summary report of it on Monday.
Okay, thank you. And then, Pierre, the last thing is, just going along the lines of the comment that Eileen Arati made earlier. I know there's a lot of questions going around and just as those are getting answered, I want to make sure that as a school committee, we can see those as well, just to make sure that we're, you know, if we get some of those questions, either, you know, around town or, you know, through an email that we're, we're giving the right, a consistent answer across the board. And just making sure that, you know, overall, if the questions are coming up on a regular basis from the, from these meetings, that we can at least say, you know, here's a question that came up. We either address it in this plan or this FAQ guide or, you know, here's the answer now. Just that we're on the same page.
Yeah, I think that that's realistic. I, yeah, I'm not sure if you're referencing.
Where there's an answer available. I know we're not, you know, we might not have an answer for everything, but if there's a specific question, we have an answer for it. I just want to make sure that we're, you know, everyone's aware of the answer.
Okay. And what we'll do, and this hasn't necessarily happened and it's probably good, but if we do get the same questions over and over and over again, then we theoretically can put it on our agenda and we can talk about it at length. I don't expect that to happen, but if we have similar questions coming up, we can attempt to address it either at that meeting or on a future agenda item. But yes, I I think that all the questions received tonight were are valid and they're good and they're good. To some of them, they've, they've been answered. To others that have not, then yes, Superintendent Burkhead mentioned that he would get back to those folks with those responses.
Yeah, and I know things are changing daily and, you know, it can be hard to get an answer for every question out there, but I just want to make sure that we're, you know, where we can, we're either updating the plan or pointing to that that spot in the plan that answers the question so that, you know, people are aware of the answers.
Okay. All right. Any, any other questions or comments?
I just have a question if about that present, about Michelle's presentation, if that's going to be on in the COVID section on the website after tonight?
Be happy to share that on the website, yes.
That's it.
That's it. All right.
One more question. It might be for Superintendent Burkhead. But it is like a follow up to a question that was asked and a public comment just about, and you had already mentioned about the, that you would share all the reports for the air quality testing and things with the public. And my question would be just more, are we going to do that at a school committee meeting? Or you think that would be coming out through a Thursday thoughts type of a process? I'm just curious. I don't even know what to expect them to look like. Is it going to be like all these numbers and charts and things? Are you going to give us a summary? Or just curious what to expect from that so we can interpret it correctly? Like what the metrics are, what the measurements are, what's an appropriate level for a measurement and things like that? So we have guidance.
Yeah, it is a great question. You know, and I'll take directions from the committee, but I, you know, might, just to give you an update, the we actually, as early as tomorrow, the air quality will be tested in our schools. And we hope to have that report by Friday. So, you know, if it's the, where all this stuff is happening rapidly and people want the information, there's a couple of ways we could do it. I could send that information out. We also have an executive summary. We also have an executive summary that Dr. Dutch and Mr. Dillon have been working on as far as all the HVAC and protocols that we've been doing. There's also a Mass Teachers Association checklist for school building safety that we've been working on to ensure safety in our schools and we'll be happy to share that information. So I think by the end of this week, we should have, you know, information compiled to send out. And we could do it a couple of ways. I can send it out, you know, through Thursday thoughts. If it comes in on Friday, you can send it out in a separate document. And then I can certainly report and will report all those updates collectively in one place at next week's school committee. So we can send it out in a timely manner to get it out to people if that's okay. And then I'll make sure to report out on Monday with the updates of the items we sent out and answer any questions of the committee and have a presentation for you.
Great. Anything else? All right. With that, I would take a motion to adjourn at 8:13. Motion by Mr. Long. Second?
Second.
Ms. Brandal, sorry, Ms. Limblong. Brandalini?
Yes.
Dates, yes. Long?
Yes.
Limblong?
Yes.
Meeting is adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you.